Our big cabinet we left in there.
...and I'll ask Wood Howian to lead in his fair place.
Good morning, Father. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day you've created for us on this side of eternity. Good morning, Father, and for all the wonderful blessings of this life, which we know come from your bountiful hand. Dear heaven Father, ask you to be with us here this evening. Lead us, guide us, direct us, have any decisions made be made in accordance to your will. Lord, ask your blessings upon the county, Lord. Upon the people that, Lord, are still struggling to survive. Lord, ask you to be with those who suffer great loss. We thank you and praise you for all things, especially for Jesus, for it's in his name we pray.
Good morning.
Let's stand and take a place, please.
Pledgeance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is 3.2, Alcohol Reform possessions A, Proclamations and Awards.
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And let's move to 3.2B, Public Comments. And before we get started, I need to read this right quick, and then we'll get into that. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comments. Any individual speaking during public comments shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to one agenda item or speak during public comment, you must sign up on the sheets at the door. Time limit to speak to an agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones or electronic devices. So, Ms. Deborah, Debbie Stevenson, you're the podium.
Well, hey there. So, I think I've pretty much met everybody here. My husband and I, whenever we moved here, we did not know how bad the housing is here in Avery County. So, we came and talked to Philip, started working with the EDC two years ago, and started our nonprofit Tiny Together, specifically in Avery County. I don't feel like I need to go back over the housing needs assessment, but I will remind you that being 100% occupancy is actually a really rare thing in America. There's only, from what I can find, nine counties in all of America that have that status. So, what we're asking for is for you to consider helping us along in our process. So, for the last two years, we've been doing the research, launched our nonprofit, got our community support, talking to business leaders. We've met with people, county officials, Virginia Fox, Senator Tillman. We've done the legwork, and now we're at a point where we found property that could actually help 45 renters. We want to build an all-rental community, and we really feel like that would help. We've had 100 people reach out to us in the last three months that have left the community permanently, that were renters. They were working at the hospital, they were working in the community as, you know, restaurant employees. Some of them were teachers, and they're not coming back because they got relocated to places like Hickory or Wilkesboro, and they had to find another job. So, we're trying to prevent that from happening. The only way that we can launch that this year is with your assistance. So, some of the things we're looking for. I wrote this down, and now my phone won't cooperate. Hold on. Things like your zoning and land use. So, I know you have a subdivision ordinance. I've talked to Dennis about it before. And what we're asking is for you to consider a variance, where we can put more housing on less acres. Since it's an all-rental community, and we're never going to sell it, and it's a nonprofit, our focus is workforce housing. It's not necessarily low income. We don't have a problem with working with people that do have a low income, but our goal is to get them on their feet. So, we want to help them with community education on things like how to be a good homeowner, financial education, parenting classes, getting them started back in college if they're young and that's something they want to do, helping them learn how to fill out a job application. So, that's going to only strengthen the fabric of Avery County. Another thing that we would really like is if you could help us with partnering for services. So, for example, we could really use a grant writer. I have been working, my husband and I both have our full-time jobs. All of the people on our board have full-time jobs. They're business owners. We just don't have time, so things like that would really help. I plan to come back in the next couple of weeks, and we can discuss it further privately if you need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to other comment on agenda items. We don't have anybody that's in them.
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we'll move to Board appointments, Avery Airport Authority. Billy Wiseman has applied for a position within Avery Airport Authority. DMC Clark signed from his position, and he's fixing out the term of DMC Clark expires August of 2025. And I need a motion to approve. Any discussion?
Sir.
Any discussions, sir? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to the North West Regional Housing Authority. Tore Clark is a special visitor to be reappointed to the North West Regional Housing Authority. This is a four-year term, and I need a motion to approve. This says four.
Move to approve.
Yes, it is, and this right here says that the five.
It's a five-year term.
So, that is a five-year term, and I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will move to 3.3A, Avery County Long-Term Recovery Group, Charles Dunn.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm Charles Dunn. I'm the board chair of the Steering Committee for the Avery County Long-Term Recovery Group. I'll be here every month, giving you, or a representative of our steering committee will be here to give you an update of what's going on. I think you have in your possession a press release we had in the Avery newspaper about a week and a half ago. Basically, we're an NC VOAD. VOAD stands for Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster. We're certified by them, and we assist faith-based volunteer and nonprofit groups operating in Avery County in the disaster recovery. We basically serve as a conduit for those groups to get together, and we identify needs, or they identify needs, and then we match them up with whatever group can fulfill that need. We have a number of committees, Housing and Construction, and you all know Ruth Shirley, and she runs that section. We have donations, volunteer management. Robin Hollis is working with Private Roads and Bridges. We have an outreach to the Latinx community through Vanessa Phillips at Feeding Avery Families. Nancy Owen from Banner Elk is working with us in small business groups. We have emotional and spiritual care with Tiffany Moon, heading that committee. Financial and legal counsel with Luke Howe from AMY Wellness. AMY stands for Avery Mitchell Yancee Wellness. They're a nonprofit that's located in Spruce Pine, but works in Avery, Mitchell, and Yancee Counties. The Long-Term Recovery Group is not a nonprofit, so we haven't gotten 501(c)(3) status. We need to have a fiscal agent that handles any donations that come in, grants that we write to get monies to help the community. That'll all go into Avery Mitchell Yancee, AMY Wellness, and be put in a separate account just for Avery County Long-Term Recovery. So, donations can come in there, grants can come to that location. And we're really committed to cooperation, communication, coordination, and collaboration for all the groups working in the community. We have a phone number that since this was put in the paper, we've had a number of both citizens, as well as nonprofits, reach out to us, 828-387-5269. We're developing a website which should be up in the next couple of weeks that'll allow people to access us that way. Any questions on the Long-Term Recovery Group from you guys, or anyone? Okay. We do meet monthly with the county. Philip has, we met with Philip and Dennis a couple of weeks ago, and we meet on a monthly basis. So, they're getting, you'll be getting two, two times of feedback then and at this meeting. Just to kind of catch you up where we are, we have case managers, James Urie and Ruth Shirley, that have been in the county and have identified 165 families with destroyed or nearly destroyed homes, or ones with really significant damage. Of that 165, 38 families have either had their repairs fixed, have a mobile home on their property, have moved to another location. Anyway, when we feel like their situation is taken care of, we mark them green, and we continue to follow up with them on a monthly basis. But, so we've settled 38 families, and they no longer have any unmet needs at this time out of 165. We've worked with Appalachia Service Project out of Johnson City. They have determined there will be three new, or they have resources to build three new homes in Avery County. They're supposed to start on those in the next few weeks, and they have funds available to build eight more. So, we're looking at between 10 and 11 homes. These are 900 square foot, three-bedroom homes. I've toured them over in, outside of Johnson City on the Nola Chucky, where a lot of homes were lost over there. They've already put these homes there, and they're really nice places, and we'll be working with them. Samaritan's Purse has moved into a rebuilding phase. We got a report today that they've now got four places where they're going to put mobile homes. There are some privacy concerns from Samaritan's Purse. We can't get those names because we want to have a single coordinated list, and so we're working through the legal part of getting those names so we can continue to follow up with those. We also have a list of people with minor needs for home repair, car damage, lost wages, and we have a number of nonprofits that can reach out and help those people. We help get them to resources. For example, Red Cross is coming back into the county in the next week. Everyone that got Red Cross funds initially, when the storm first happened, has gotten an email. They can apply for more Red Cross funds. We'll get up to $2,000. People that didn't get the original Red Cross funds, Red Cross, I know it's going to be at Minneapolis Baptist Church, and we think they're going to be at Mayling Community College. They hadn't finalized that. It's going to be on a Saturday in two weeks. That'll get publicized. If you haven't gotten any funds from Red Cross, you go there, you sign up, demonstrate a need, and you will get $2,000 from Red Cross. And our job is to help get that out into the community through Facebook and through our website once we get it up and going. We've also worked very diligently to catalog all the private roads and bridges, and I know you guys hear more than enough about roads and bridges to drive you crazy. But Robin Hollis is all over that, and I know she's had a lot of discussions with the county and is working with the county to help facilitate that. Basically, I was at a meeting today in Boone, and Justin Summers from Senator Budd's office said, from a FEMA standpoint, and I mean, this discussion could go on all night, but basically, if you can build your bridge back in the same place that it was before without any changes, you know, in its original bed, that they would let you build that without a high-rise certification. But if there's any change to that bed, you're going to have to get high-rise certification. And I think most of the bridges in this county will probably end up needing that. Robin's a much better, a much better resource of that than I am. One thing our case managers do is they check on these 165 folks every week. So, they get a phone call, a text message, and when they answer back, you know, do you have needs? Where, who did you fill out an application with, and have they come back to you? You know, where you are in that output. We find three or four new families a week right now. The numbers are starting to decrease, but we continue to find new families. Our goal in conclusion is really to facilitate the work of, between the government, FEMA, local officials, Red Cross, Samaritan's Purse, Appalachia Service Project, churches in the community, nonprofits, and getting services to citizens to help them get back on their feet. And that's everything from, you know, propane to money to help make a mortgage payment, to repairing their roof, to repairing their porch, to getting them a whole new home. Any questions? Feel free to contact me if you have any questions.
I will say that, we've talked with other counties, every county in the impacted area has developed a long-term recovery group, and NC VOAD has been kind of the model used by those. So, this is not something that sprang up, you know.
It's not organic, no.
Arbitrarily, you know. It was a very focused desire because trying to coordinate all of these different agencies. And even with that and the group, the part that are part of this, there are still other non-governmental organizations that are doing fine work and are still continuing to work in every way, shape, and form, and are not, you know, separated from doing that work in any way. We're just trying to use this group along with what the county does to be sure there's an efficiency, there's not an overlap of services, that those that need help are going to be able to receive it in a timely way, using the best resource available. So, just want to say this is something that's very common in the western North Carolina, in these affected areas, that every county has developed a program like this, and I feel ours is one of the strong ones in that class.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think something you said is very important. There are a lot of people doing work out there that, that we don't interfere with anybody doing good work. What we want them to do, though, is to let us know who they're working, you know, what house are they repairing? What, what other structure are they repairing? So, we don't have a volunteer group from Pennsylvania coming down here, and we, we're going to show up at their house, ready to rebuild their, their back porch, and, or their deck, or put a roof on their house, and it's already been done. So, that's, that's our, one of our main goals. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is 3.3B, we pay our commission at dentistry Scott Head.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you very much. There's a lot going on in the last five months, as you all well know. It does my heart good to hear the previous speaker talk about coordination and communication. If you're not aware of all those things, you don't know what's going on, but it, it does my heart good to hear that. my heart good to hear that. So with the Avery County Fire Commission, I just wanted to give you an update. During the storm, basically the fire departments were undamaged, the largest being Green Valley where they had a, a corner of their building washed out. There has been some other minor damage in other fire departments, but lo and behold, insurance came in. And insurance through Brian and his efforts came in quickly and paid fully. And so everybody's got taken care of and it's not coming back to the commissioners for, or the commission for money. So that was a wonderful blessing that we have. Basically, all the fire departments became central distribution type services, but that was kind of cleared up pretty quickly. So the readiness for, for the fire service and the fire departments never really was compromised that much. Everything was held out. So I wanted to let y'all know that. And then the fire, because we were in the process of like Elk Park was being rebuilt, that's kind of a little bit on the delay to update you on all those fire stations and the money that, that you all have allocated in the past year. There's about a half a million dollars a year to renovate about four or five fire departments. Elk Park was in the middle of their renovation and obviously that got delayed, got delayed on a couple of things because of the storm. Also, the architectural firm that we had hired, the guy who was over Elk Park in that, that firm passed away during all this. So they were going to say, okay, you know, we're, we're trying to get cleaned up. They're having their own issues. I think they at first saying, okay, we have, you know, a replacement for that during a tragic time for them, but also there, it looks like there may be some either merger or takeover, something going on with the company, but we still have a contractor who's ready to go. We're looking to get that back going full bore here in the next few weeks, this month. So Brian's working diligently with them and the issues that they have for the architecture and oversight, but also the contractors ready to go, trying to get that site kind of cleaned up and, and ready to go as well. So Elk Park should be getting ready to get back to going. Frank, or Green Valley, we're getting ready to, they've got in line to purchase another piece of property. If, since you've maybe not been fully aware, we had Elk Park, Cross Nor, Green Valley as in, in order to try to get renovated, build back new. So Green Valley has gone ahead. We're getting ready to purchase a piece of property on that and they'll be ready to move ahead. So Elk Park will start this month. Green Valley is getting ready to purchase property. They'll be ready to go and then, but Cross Nor, Cross Nor has had, and they were like number two in line, Cross Nor's had a hard time finding a piece of property. And here's the issue. You can't take Cross Nor Volunteer Fire Department, pull them down on Smoky Straits somewhere. They've got to be in the central of their district. And we went through this for Elk Park because we looked for maybe another site for Elk Park, but there was not another site available without it not being in the middle of their district and Cross Nor's having those same problems. So I'm going to kind of put it out there if we can get, there's been some talk maybe with Cross Nor and getting something there with Mr. Wiseman at the end of, or along Sam, Sam Brown Road, but that's not for sure. That's just been talked about some. We can get from help from y'all. Let's talk it up. Let's see who can help. Let's help them find a place because their existing place in the side of the hill there is not conducive to what we need for the future. Same thing happened with Elk Park. We looked around and there's been, and some of y'all may be on that committee, Elk Park, we had to stay at the existing, but we were also able to buy a piece of property right next to it that gives them room to do that. And we're looking for facilities that's going to take us into the next century. So Cross Nor needs some help there. So whatever we can do to talk that up, to try to get people to get involved, we're not looking for anything for free, right? We're just needing the opportunity for, for them to have a, a facility that'll take them into the next, in the next century. On the tail end of that would be Banner Elk, but, and they'll be coming up, but we're looking to get these all moving. Now, as my understanding now, if you don't, if you're not aware, which you probably are, we've got money for the Elk Park from the state. And so we're looking to also that between Brian and Philip and the opportunities that may come together, that Green Valley or Cross Nor, also there may be some money available for those which is helping out for everybody. Junior, just in case you didn't know, we had already passed about a half a million dollars a year to go toward a plan to take, to renovate or redo these fire departments over the next six years. And to do that, but we're also fortunate enough to have some money coming in to offset that, that maybe that doesn't have to come from Avery County taxpayers. So that's where we are on that. A couple of things, as we go into, and maybe Brian knows a little bit more than that, and maybe y'all know a little bit more than that, but, so we're coming into our next budget time. I, I got a feeling, and this is just my sense and it may be unfounded, that this is going to be crazy because we're going to have expenses from storm. A lot of our expenses though, insurance really did come through for us for each station. And I think everybody was kind of surprised. Brian kind of went in on this and so there's not, I think we're okay in terms of current budget year, but as we go into next budget year, we're going to need some guidance. We're going to, you know, how do you handle trying to get through this budget year into next budget year? Is, is there storm expenses going to happen after July? What do we do with that? So in my mind, I'm kind of freaking out just a little bit. I think Brian's probably a little more calmer than I am, but you know, we're going to get ready, we're getting ready to start our budget meetings and get into budgets. So we need to understand and we need guidance on what we can do, what is there, what's us, what's FEMA, what's going on. Need to have a good sense as we start to go through that. So just kind of thinking ahead a little bit. And that's the bulk of it. I know that during this whole time, there are a lot of heroic deeds and there's also a lot of finger pointing that's going on probably. I don't know, but going to be. But I just want to say that from my perspective in my world in the Fire Commission, as this went on, and I've been, I've been employed by boards probably about half my life. Either I've been employed by boards or I am employed by myself. I was at Quail Hollow for 10 years. I was at River for 10 years. I've worked for boards. And working for a board like these folks right here work for y'all is a different deal. You know, you're not working for one person. So I just want to give a shout out to the coordinator and the assistant coordinator, Brian and Teddy for what they did during all of this. And Avery County ain't got no better. So I've been impressed. I think, I just want to give them a shout out. So that's kind of where we are. Do y'all have any questions, I guess? I mean, we're, I wanted to come back and get on the agenda and talk with y'all and tell you where we are. Elk Park getting ready to start back. We're getting ready with the other ones. Green Valley's getting ready to buy a property. We're getting ready to go. So we're still moving along with all that that goes. So if anybody has any questions or what we're doing, we'll move forward. Like to come probably back again. We, we want to try to do this each quarter. I do want to say that the, the Fire Commission is a makeup of two people from the, that you all appoint, two people that the Association points, and then we appoint a fifth. That's what makes up the Fire Commission. There's about a handful of this type of system in the state that coordinates volunteers and, and in my opinion, it works really, really well considering where we were and where we going to need to be. The Fire Association has a new leader from what I've seen. He's young and fired up and ready to go. He's all about communication. So we're maybe some, get them involved a little bit with y'all directly as well to make sure, we don't want to leave any money on the table. Obviously, the fire departments are individual entities. We've got to deal with each one as an entity, but, and when it comes to what we've got going on here with the federal government or the state funds, we don't want to leave any money on the table and we want to make sure everybody's coordinated. And I don't know what all that exactly entails, but we need to make sure that we get, if we need to get everybody in the rooms, get everybody in the room so that Avery County is not without any funds that it certainly deserves after all this. So if anybody has any questions, that's fine.
Scott, one thing that I would like to sort of point out, and as part of this aftermath of this storm, one of the discussions that we've had with Brian and the departments and almost anybody else is the danger that we have right now from forest fires. There's so much timber down, there's access, roads are blocked, you know, there's like a, a pretty critical danger out there. And I would like, if you could maybe speak to that. We have had that discussion. We are trying to mitigate that danger, but just want to let people know we are aware of that, especially as this year goes long, as all this dries out, the danger that's there is very apparent and steps are being made to try to, to deal with that. So I hope that.
We, well, we do have a, we, we have the Forest Service that we have a, a pretty intimate relationship with. They do come and speak with us from time to time, but Brian's going to be in touch with them all the time. I think we all realize if you see the trees down, I mean, somebody's not going to go through there and get all that for firewood. That's, that's, it's unbelievable, the amount of forestry that's down. And so we just have to, going to have to coordinate that and see, and, and try to know what that is. And then, and so that's something that we're just going to have to, to deal with. Now, you go to what the man before I'd said, or before me said, that, and you've known bridges and access is huge and that is every bit of a fire deal. I know in, in Banner Elk, they were talking about, they had the water going and not the sewer going. Well, I mean, if you're flushing them, but you can't get the sewer, what's going on? Well, obviously the answer to that is you got to have the water if somebody's house catches on fire. So you got to get the water going before you get the sewer going, which may not make sense, but it does if your house catches on fire because they need those hydrants. So that's what you're, we're dealing with. I think we're all conscious of and that we move forward hoping that things don't get to that point to where they're so dry. And I think, I just read an article where Olford's starting to get some wildfires and because it's starting to dry out, it's starting to get windy and, and hopefully that could just be, you know, like a California situation that we don't get into, but we are cognizant of that and hoping to be prepared for that along with everything else.
I would just say, and I think the, the real danger too is from the storm damage with all the trees hanging, that you're going to get a lot of sparks off power lines and that's something, you know, it's hard to control because you don't know when that's going to fall. If it gets dry, that's, that could be a real danger for Avery County.
And I think that's where we're cognizant of that and then working with the Forestry Service as well. So that fortunately, I don't, not that I know of, that that's been an issue. You know, people have lost their houses due to, to the washing and the floods and that kind of thing, but not been much of a fire issue. The fire departments are ready to go and have been, and that's been very fortunate. I mean, if you go down to Green Valley, how in the world that building's even there? It's amazing. But fortunately, they've lost, that was just one bay and they would be able to take care of that. So it, it's, I think we're ready to go and let's just hope that it doesn't get to the point to where it's, it's what our worst fears would be.
Do you have a feel for how many water points were compromised in the storm? How many we lost?
Yeah, we have a peck of a camp and it's actually pretty scary.
Right.
Most of the districts, they all utilize rural waters.
Right. Because we have, we have, that's one of the things that we have requested assistance with is build back, the build out of accessible water points because that's a pretty specific engineering.
Well, and for people to understand what that is, is that there was a pond where we had a water point, now it's full of gravel and you don't have the water there. So that's where it's got to get put back in and dug out and, and that's like everything else that y'all are aware of is, is going to be a process.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time and for what you do.
Thank you.
And the Taxation Minister has reported on the recovery.
Good evening. Please approve our collections for January, $3,206,331.35.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Please approve our releases of $29.29.
Motion to approve. I have a motion.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our revow sales, I just pulled up just a few. We had 24 sales in January of this year and 58 last year. Our sales ratio for those sales is at 65%. Last year was 67%. I just included tax cards and I did include one little picture I wanted you to see what $100,000 will get you. Okay, the next thing I have is what we, what you all do every year, the resolution of the Avery County Board of Commissioners to approve a special board for the Board of Equalization and Review. Do you want me to read it? Okay.
We just need a motion to adopt the resolution. Sure. Any second.
Sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Every year in February, I'm supposed to report the outstanding balance that we have. Our original levy from discoveries and whatever was $24,285,060.80. As of January 31, we have $1,995,574.17 outstanding. Our collection rate right now is at 91.78. Last year we were at 93.48, which puts us about 1.7% behind. Considering the situation and the mail service and bless their hearts, they're trying everything they can do, I think we're okay as far as, you know, what we're going to do. Let's see. I also have in your packet a memo asking or submitting five applications for the Special Board of Equalization and Review. And on that memo, when I sent this to Cindy, I put April 21st as the closing date. It needs to be April 28th as the closing date. And if you all would consider those applications for the next meeting. And if you all would consider those applications for the next meeting. And just a little side note, um, where we've still continued to do damage assessments and where we sent the letter out with our listing forms, we have a hundred, or excuse me, we have a thousand thirty-seven property, properties damaged for a total of thirty-six million, three sixty-three, nine oh-two. Now, that's just residential. There's another ten million and maybe a little more out there. I'm waiting on information from resorts with golf course damage. So right now, I'm looking at another ten million dollars. So it makes it forty-six, three sixty-three. Um, we have five hundred and forty-four minor damages, sixty-nine total losses, two hundred and seventeen major damages, fifty-nine destroyed, and then a hundred and forty-eight land adjustments. These may change as we're still keying stuff and still getting information in from our listing time.
I'm sorry, could you draw that list again, please?
Um, five hundred and forty-four minor damages, sixty-nine total loss, two hundred and seventeen major damage, fifty-nine destroyed, and a hundred and forty-eight land adjustments. And it's kinda, it's kinda hard, um, to see folks that, I, I, I checked up on some people that I know their road was destroyed to their subdivision, and they finally got power January thirty-first. They got their road fixed enough that due to power could get in. So I happened to check on them that day, and they happened to get power. So, and I know that there's probably still other houses out there that don't have power. So just letting you know.
One thing I will, uh, say is that, uh, a few, several months ago, under our tax administrator brought us a proposal that was part of the legislative move to, uh, dictate that all liens that were placed and all, uh, properties that were in danger of foreclosure had to have, be manually posted. In other words, a sign had to go on each and every property. And she brought that to our attention. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, uh, fought against that. The Association of Tax Administrators has brought pressure to bear. And, uh, just found out last week that that has been rescinded, uh, and we will allow to continue just to be able to post those in the paper and on media. And the, the cost and expense and inefficiency of having to manually post paper signs on each and every property was just way past the pause. So I, I applaud her for bringing that to our attention, and for the association, and for the tax administrators group, and all to bring pressure to bear to get that rescinded.
Yeah, that was a big relief. Also, I just, I have to brag on the folks in the office. I just can't, I can't say enough for the work that they're doing. They're, they're tired, but they're still going. So just let y'all know that they're, they're still trucking.
No, we appreciate them. Thank you. Afternoon, Board. This might be long and lengthy, and I'll, I'll try my best. And stop me when you have a question, okay? So, uh, we're looking at approximately a hundred and twenty-six days since a lien. But every day as county manager and as county government, we see hope. Um, we see progress. And a lot of that is because of Avery County Long Term Recovery Group and, and all the nonprofits. Um, I just want to shout out for a second on the Daniel Boone Bear Club. They have raised sixty-nine thousand dollars, paid out sixty-four thousand, eight hundred of that. They've helped a hundred and twenty-four individuals and ten churches. Uh, not only have they done that, but they've also did Toys for Tots, and they still do their scholarship program. So it is great to live in Avery County and recover together. Um, I'd like to ask that we, we don't forget those victims, and I don't think we are. Um, there's still thirty-one families living in hotel rooms, um, because there's not better, adequate, something that they can go to. So, uh, let's just not forget about, forget about them. Um, as of last week, our total debris removal from the right of ways is up to two hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine cubic yards. And that's a lot of debris. Uh, with that, we do have an important announcement that we will be making here tonight and tomorrow through our social media. Um, as, as of Sunday, February twenty-third or twenty-five, all placement of flood debris removal along the state right of way will conclude. This means citizens must stop placing debris along said right of ways, as debris teams will be making their final passes through the county after that date. Kitchen trash and typical household trash is always accepted at the Avery waste sites. Other debris and waste can be taken to the county landfill. Uh, any trash or debris placed after the explained date will be considered littering, and charges will be made and fines. Uh, the ending of debris placement on the right of way cleanup is only the first step in this massive recovery project. As for step two of cleanup, we will focus on the river and stream debris removal. Uh, the first of these water-related recoveries has already been submitted to FEMA for approval, and the right of entry and other documents needed will be obtained. Uh, for step three, Avery County will focus on private property debris removal, in which the planning process is already in progress, and we're awaiting final guidelines. I want to thank the citizens, the victims. Uh, this cleanup has, has been a lot. A lot on, a lot on everybody. I appreciate everyone's patience. And for any questions about the press release, when we release it tomorrow, you can still call the eight-two-eight, seven-three-three, eight-two-seven-three hotline, and somebody will be available during your calls. Have any commissioners with a question about that? Couple of other important announcements. Um, FEMA is here in the county doing our public buildings assessments and the park assessments. Uh, I think that ends at the end of the week. They had started last week, so that is happening. Uh, very important, FEMA Individual Assistance, the deadline today has been extended to March the eighth. Um, the Avery campus beside the school board is open Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays, half a days from eight to one. So I encourage all victims of this flood to please go and register for individual assistance. If you get a denial letter, I ask that you go back. Uh, there is staff there to help you through the process. Now, we have two, uh, employees here with us tonight that are here. And, uh, Sean, thank you for being here. And Tammy is now our county person. She'll be with us for the next three years. So, uh, it's great to have a team with us, uh, twenty-four, seven feels like, but we do leave them alone sometimes on the weekends. Uh, in your informational items, Board, but I just want to make sure everyone hears about this. Wednesday, February fifth, which is this week, uh, there's agricultural recovery workshop here, nine to six. You can drop in, uh, meet with the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Department of Commerce, and they will help you with anything ag-related in the recovery. Uh, want to point out in your packet also, there is a literal appreciation to Jerry Moody, and all he does and his staff does here at the Ag Center. We've got the best extension agent in the state of North Carolina, right here in Avery County. Want to thank Chuck Edwards and his office about the Capitol needs, and I want to thank you, the commissioners, uh, for the list, which we, uh, which focused mainly on public safety. And we did submit that to his office. Ted Bud's office, uh, for their support over the last few months. It's been unbelievable. Dudley Green and what he's been doing, Ralph Heiss and their support in the recovery process. I just want to say that out loud. Um, also in your packet is the announcement for the next, uh, National Opioid Settlement Public Input Session. That is the twenty-seventh of February. Um, had to move it a couple of times because of some conflicts. The morning session is ten to twelve, and the evening session is six to eight, six to eight here in this, uh, room. So that is for the National Opioid Settlement Report and Public, uh, Input. Your Economic Development Minutes are in your packet. Our Tourism and Development Authority, we are collecting room tax. And the first meeting was held here in the building on the seventh of January. We've been blessed to be able to put together a very good board for that. And, uh, they're gonna take their time and do the right things, and we look forward to the process on, on the room tax. Um, Troy Cook, who writes grants for us, uh, today let me know that he has gotten a Piedmont Natural Gas Grant for Volunteer Avery. So there's another one, Charles, that will be able to help someone through the Avery County Long Term Recovery Group with that grant. Every little grant helps. Uh, you know, they may not be millions of dollars, but every, everything helps. So, um, this past Friday, I got the opportunity to have a meeting with Julie, with the High County Council of Governments and the Dogwood Health Trust. And we had lunch, and, uh, they know our needs, and, uh, they're proud of the county and, and what we've done. Um, Department of Social Services, I don't want to jinx it, will hopefully be moving into their temporary mobile offices at the pool parking lot. Um, and I'm not gonna say this week, cause something else could go wrong. Uh, this has been a, a long process, but we are trying. Uh, the, uh, the builder and the contractor is scheduled, getting supplies ordered to start the renovations at the DSS. Uh, work is coming along at Daymark at the mental health facility, so hopefully we'll be back in there, uh, before the first of March, but I don't want to jinx that either. Uh, elevator repair work at the admin building has started. Um, some heat equipment for the heating system has come in. It's installed, but we're still waiting on the main component, which is the boiler. So, uh, unfortunately, the elevator work had to stop until they could get some heat in the building. Now, today it's sixty degrees, so maybe they could have done better. But, uh, it is moving along. Um, we, uh, again, thank Limble Resorts and what they're doing for our senior center, cause we are cooking meals. We are delivering ninety meals a day and having about thirty-eight, forty people for in-house visits every day. Uh, we are putting out a request to get a mobile kitchen. Uh, unfortunately, some of the kitchens we have checked on throughout the area and various places are not gonna work and accommodate. Uh, and we have also asked for a engineer to help through the process of, uh, rebuilding the senior center. So with that, believe it or not, is all I have, unless there's any questions. We covered a lot.
All right. Good evening, Board. I have seven items for your consideration this evening. Item number one, the Department of Agricultural Extension has received a Cabela's Outdoor Fund Grant for twenty-five hundred dollars to fund the four H Shooting Sports Program. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit ag extension grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars and credit ag extension grant revenue twenty-five hundred dollars.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, the Department of Emergency Management has received a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to fund hazmat response for the three counties in the Tow River Local Emergency Planning Committee. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit EM grants fifteen thousand dollars and credit EM grant revenue fifteen thousand dollars. Item number three, the Department of Emergency Management has received a Homeland Security Grant in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to fund the purchase of two light towers and mobile generators. One light tower and generator will be issued to Avery County, and the second will be issued to Wilkes County as part of the grant award agreement. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit EM grants eighty thousand dollars and credit EM grant revenue eighty thousand dollars.
We will have to tell Wilkes about that right now.
That's right, that's right. We, we can hang on to that for just a little bit. Uh, the Department of Emergency Management has received an insurance reimbursement for the Forest River Bathroom Trailer. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars and thirty-three cents and credit insurance reimbursements thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars and thirty-three cents. All right. Item number five is a resolution to fund the purchase of Apple products for the Avery County Schools. Uh, request the Board to approve the resolution as presented before you. Item number six is a resolution to establish and maintain a project ordinance for the debris removal due to Hurricane, Hurricane Helene project. Uh, this is a total, is laid out before you, of thirty million dollars, thirty million, four thousand, eight hundred dollars, uh, in expense and anticipated revenue being funded for that project.
I think the chairman just want to ask if there are any commissioners who need to recuse themselves in this.
So we need a motion to adopt the resolution to status of maintained a project ordinance for the regular removal due to Hurricane Helene project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Item number seven is a resolution to establish and maintain an account with the North Carolina Capital Management Trust for the occupancy tax collection for Avery County District A. Request the Board to approve the resolution as presented before you. All right. And that's that for those items. I've also, as finance officer for the Avery County Tourism Development Authority, uh, part of my duties is to report to the Board, um, our, our finances as far as what we have received. Of course, no money has been spent. Philip briefed you all on the formation of the Board, and we had a great first meeting, a lot of great, uh, ideas, and, and, uh, I'm very confident in all the great things that's gonna come out of that. And a budget has not yet been established. We hope to establish that budget at the next meeting. So there's no expenditures, only, uh, the revenue. And so far, of course, we started collecting in August of twenty-twenty-four, um, and this is collections from August through December through the end of the year. We've not yet received, uh, January, as they have till the nineteenth, to pay the January, uh, taxes. But for those five months, it's so far two hundred and eighty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Uh, of course, as is expected, October was, uh, very low, but November and December has gradually started bouncing back to some pretty solid numbers. All right. That's all I have for y'all, unless you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any?
Three point six, closed session, chair.
I do not have anything.
So three point seven, our protocol means December the twelfth, twenty-twenty-four special meeting, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four special meeting, January the sixth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting. Need a motion to approve?
Twenty-five.
All in favor?
Twenty-five.
Well, it says twenty-four. I'm probably have to read.
Mine says twenty-four.
Sorry. Twenty-five.
The front agenda states it's twenty-four, but the this says twenty-five, so.
We really need that whole thing, and you say twenty-five?
No, it's not.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Who made that motion? And who said it?
Three point eight, James, you send out any questions on those? If not, they'll be approved by consent. Three point nine, informational items. I forgot that for you. Somebody, you went over that pretty good when you.
Pretty thorough. Was there any questions on?
Three point ten, county mayors. March the third is the next board. Well, if everybody's good, we'll, uh, motion to adjourn.
Privilege for me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Heath mentioned earlier, used the word guidance when he talked about leading guidance on some of these things moving forward. And that's a very interesting word in the last four months. Because we have sought guidance from every agency that has an alphabet name at every level. And that guidance or lack thereof is one of the things that has been problematic in moving forward. And I think for citizens to know that a lot of the things that they would like to see happen, we would too. And working very hard on those things and we're awaiting the guidance to be presented to us on how to move forward. And we, as this board and as the county government, have a judiciary responsibility to guard the county's money and to not place the county in a position where at some point in the future, some of these funds could be rescinded or other penalties might be involved. So the reason that things may not seem to be moving as fast as folks would like is that we're, one thing that we've learned as commissioners, we're only allowed to do what we're statutorily allowed to do. And anything above and beyond that is what's known as felons. So we're waiting for that guidance in order to move forward and working very diligently with every level of elected official and state agency and federal agency to try to receive that guidance that we may, that we may move forward. So I just want everybody to know all the work that's going on at so many levels trying to get all these things done.
I know that guidance is slow, but we are still seeking that.
We're still seeking and we will, we will get it. They, a lot of the folks in Raleigh, they know us by name. And whenever we're having a meeting and Avery County shows up, they go, oh, not those people again. Because we're vocal, you know, and we, we're advocates for Avery County. And just one other thing that Caleb reported on the occupancy tax, that TDA fund. That sounds really great, but I just remind everybody that those, those funds are earmarked very specifically on how they're spent. I had to comment the other day of when that money was announced, someone said, well, we need gravel. I understand that. That's a different part of money. And that TDA money is used for very specific things. And again, there's statutes, statutes that govern what that is for. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Appreciate the, the support that has been given in the months that we've just finished and in the months and years that are ahead of us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.